This Mojave County Supervisors Meeting for January 18th is called the Order. If you'll please rise for an invocation from Pastor George Carey, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we give you praise, we give you thanks for this day that you have made. We give you praise, we give you thanks for the governments you have established on earth. Particularly, we thank you for our city, our county, our state, and our national governments, especially now, our county government of Mojave. We lift to you this morning, to your throne, the County Board of Supervisors and each individual on this board. We thank you, Lord, for their willingness to serve both you and all of us in these positions. The times in which we live today call for wisdom and knowledge of truth. Help our leaders and their commitments to make honest and truth-filled decisions on our behalf. In the name of Jesus Christ, I ask you to bless this meeting today. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Board of Supervisors may by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the Board's attorneys on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A, 3, 4, and 7. Motion and action to call for an executive session to be held February 7, 2022, at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A, 3, 4, and 7, to discuss items noticed on the agenda with Aster.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so order. Official business that come before the Board, committee or legislative reports. Supervisor Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a busy couple of weeks for me. Started out on the 3rd, I attended the ACO LPC meeting, and also again on the 10th. On the 5th, in order to prepare for the upcoming legislative session, as President of CSA, I kicked off the 2022 Effective Engagement with State Lawmakers webinar. This focused on legislative process, the current legislative environment, and we explained how a bill becomes a law and how the county supervisors participate and affect in that process. Those attending from Mojave County was Coral Lloyd and Sarah Hall, and the video is archived for anyone who missed it that would like to review that. Then on the 6th, I attended the ACJC Joint Executive Legislative Team meeting where victims' assistance and funding bills were discussed prior to the next ACJC Commission meeting, which will be later this week. Also, I attended the virtual non-AMA groundwater committee meeting. And then, lastly, I, this past week, was honored to represent the County Supervisors Association at the President's and Executives Forum. This was hosted by the National Council of County Association Executives and the National Association of Counties. This was held in Washington, D.C., and it's an annual event that brings together newly-elected county association presidents from across the county and the country. I was joined by CSA's Executive Director Craig Sullivan. The agenda contained important information and allowed for productive conversations, and some of those highlights I'll include in my report. We had a leadership seminar during which a retired Navy Admiral used the history and experience of our first president, George Washington, to discuss crucial leadership during challenging times. We also had a briefing from the NACO leadership on its strategic plan and policy priorities, which helps to inform our association about where we can connect to support Arizona counties at the federal level. There was a briefing from NACO staff on recently released rule associated with local resources from the American Rescue Plan Act. This allowed for a dialogue among the associations about how counties are using resources and issues that they are experiencing in the implementation. There was a panel of state association leaders who led a discussion on how association services adjusted and developed through the pandemic, as well as how county associations can work to better support their county officials going forward. Also, we had briefings from staff with the administration, specifically Luke McGowan, a senator, a senior advisor at the White House, and Charles Small, Deputy Assistant Secretary for the U.S. Department of Transportation. And then, lastly, the forum created a unique opportunity to connect and talk with county officials and association directors from other states. This is part of the forum that I found particularly valuable, sharing information and learning from one another about how we work to serve the public. I really think this forum provided a very positive beginning to my year of service as President of CSA. It certainly motivates me to do the best I can to build upon CSA's work to support all 15 counties in Arizona. And I would like to thank this Board and our colleagues from state and other counties for giving me the opportunity to lead in this important association. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Angus.
Thank you. I am, just to piggyback on what Supervisor Bishop was talking about, I'm the representative for the Legislative Policy Committee through CSA, and that's where we actually start analyzing the bills that are being presented at the legislature, and we also have a priority that we voted on back in October, and they basically are our lobbyists going forward. And so this was really one of the first ones, it was last Friday. And a particular note, just so everybody knows, and this happens every year, and Chairman Gould can probably confirm this, you know, we send people down there, especially Republicans, and we say, they say that, you know, they don't want to do a lot of bills, they want to cut the bills, you know, government, government regulates us too much, and then they go down there, and there were over 800 bills presented. Now, of course, very few of those are going to go through, but I just, I just wanted to let you know sort of the things that we go through, and so the things that we talk about come before this LPC, which is one representative from each county, and we vote whether to accept it and present it to the entire Board or deny it. And I just, the things that are relevant to you guys, I know in Mojave County, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up that there is a big, big push to not support election integrity laws, which our representatives are putting forward there. I was not surprised that the Democrats on the committee, which they are in the majority, but I was surprised that the Republicans too. So I may need your help if election integrity is important to you. The other things that we talked about, that we seem to talk about every year, eliminate the Arizona Department of Juvenile Corrections fee, which, you know, in the, in the months ahead, weeks and months ahead, I will be, it's very interesting, I will be telling you some of the history of it and where we're at. You know, a lot of these things, when the downturn of the economy, the things that the state paid at the county level, which they should pay at the county level, when there was a downturn in the economy years ago, they, they gave it back. You know, I know Supervisor Johnson was here doing those battles, but they, they gave it, that responsibility back to the counties. And now that there's a lot of money, billions in, in surplus money at the state, we, we believe it's time for them to take back the responsibility that they should have been doing in the first place. So that's my report for today, and like I said, I'll be coming back, but if you, if election integrity is an important issue for you, get in touch with me, and I will tell you maybe how you can advocate for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. You can tell it's election year because they only introduced 800 bills. Supervisor Lingefelter.
Thank you, Chairman Gould. For those of you in the audience and watching that are following our water, we've had two bills entered into so far. The first would be House Bill 2510, sponsored by Cobb and Biasucci. That bill covers something that most of you that have been following the water issues are familiar with, the rural management areas, that would be targeted to protect a basin, a groundwater basin considered to be at risk. So we'll be following that bill. The second bill, which is of importance to those citizens that we have living along the river, House Bill 2512 would be prohibition on fourth priority water transfers. As you know, the county of Mojave has been against fourth priority water transfers. We're currently fighting one, which is at the federal government right now to be decided upon, and that would, this bill would prohibit fourth priority water transfers sponsored by Cobb, so we'll certainly be following those bills and providing testimony when we have the opportunity to do so. The only other thing I would mention is last week, County Manager Elters and I jumped on the line with the state parties on the Walapai Water Settlement. We continue to trudge forward on the language with all the state parties. I think we're getting reading this week, and they hope to have legislation introduced very soon this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Johnson.
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. County Managers' Report.
Good morning, Chairman and Board Members. I have several items, so please bear with me, starting with an update on the fairground transfer from the association to Mojave County that took place on January 1st. As expected, the association turned over all keys to the fairground to Mojave County Parks on January 1st, which was a Saturday, and Mojave County followed through to secure the fairground and the facilities with county locks. The transition is progressing, perhaps not quite as planned. The association still has property on site, including refrigerators and freezers and picnic tables, some bleachers, and our parks, as well as risk management, are working with the association to remove those in a timely fashion. For your information, the association did not have any financial records turned over to the county for review and audit, and we will follow through on that as well. The only other item that I would like to share with you this morning related to the fairground is that the department did hire a fairground superintendent. The name is Ryan Freworth. Mr. Freworth worked with both the City of Kingman Parks and City of Bullhead Parks before, so we believe he's well-suited and qualified for this position and look forward to his leadership. With that said, moving on to another item, we staff is working through cleaning up some old items related to a lease that we have with Verizon Cellular. This is pertaining to a site that they leased from the county in Dolan Springs. The effort is really to address some back rental that is due to the county that goes back several years, and we're working on two parts. One is to address and clean up the back rental, the other one is to develop and execute a lease going forward. The first one, which is retrieving past due rent, which is approximately $200,000, is anticipated to be on your agenda at the first meeting in March for your approval, and the executing of new lease for future arrangement is anticipated to be on your agenda for the second meeting in March. We're not having any issues, it's just a matter of addressing the steps needed and having it in place with your blessing. Moving on to another item, which is employee vacancies, we continue to experience what I and I think you, the Board, would consider excessive number. We're still hovering around 130 vacancies countywide. If you break that down, it'd be about 110 in all departments and about 25, it fluctuates with the courts and probation. But we continue to work on that and to facilitate and do what we can to recruit and hire. Another item that I would like to brief you on is the negative impact of the pandemic that continues to be on the county services through employees, either exposures or actually coming down with it, testing positive. And for your information, to date, just, just to give you an idea and a feel for what the numbers are from the beginning of the pandemic, so the winter of 2020 until now, we have over 200 positive cases. To, to be specific, and I would say that perhaps is not every positive case, simply because some early on who had PTO time and came down with it, just stayed home until they healed, and those that perhaps use the take-home kits and test at home and don't necessarily report it. So that's just the positive cases. It does not include the close exposures where employees have to stay home and test and get a negative test before they return. So I, I would submit to you, the Board, that our departments have really done an excellent and an exemplary job mitigating those impacts and scheduling and social distancing at work and doing the best they can to continue to provide services. I will close with one, the last item, which is we are starting the annual budgeting process a little earlier this year, for your information, with a, with the goal of bringing a final budget for you, the Board, to adopt in July as opposed to August. We think that is better for you and for governing, and our goal ultimately, just so you know, is to perhaps use this as a stepping stone, start even earlier next year, and perhaps have a budget to you to adopt in June before the end of the fiscal year, the current fiscal year. So I end with that. Thank you for listening to me. I'd be happy to answer any question you may have.
Questions for the County Manager? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Approval of the December 20th, 2021 Board of Supervisor minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
If you've heard that motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so order. Call the public. Regina Garcia.
Hello, my name is Regina Garisco. I'm a resident of Bullhead City. I'm here today to discuss $2.3 million of American Rescue Plan Act funding and its proposed future use, which may be illegal. Also, how this proposed voting measure violates the state constitution. The final interim rule for the American Rescue Plan Act clearly states in simple language, Section 602(c)(2a) also provides for states and territories that the eligible uses do not include directly or indirectly offsetting a reduction in the net tax revenue of the state or territory. The county budget is made up of state and local tax revenue, so you must ask yourself the following: Are the proposed ARPA funds being used in the place of county spending now or in the future? If so, then this violates the ARPA rules and regulations. The Bullhead City School District Governing Board requested that the public hold a vote by mail and ballot on May 17th to allocate $2.3 million in ARPA funding for its district housing project. Affordable housing is funded through the county budget, and its development is under its jurisdiction. It is funded by the State Housing Trust, that currently has $24.5 million at its disposal. Using ARPA funds creates an offset violation because it takes the place of county spending for affordable housing. Secondly, all proceeds would be put back into the property for expansion and maintenance. This would further result in violation because it creates a reduction in the state tax revenue provided by affordable housing. Also, a mail-in ballot election of any measure violates the Constitution of the State of Arizona, Article 2, Section 21. All elections shall be free and equal, and no power, civil or military, shall at any time interfere to prevent the free exercise of the right of suffrage. By restricting voter access to only mail-in ballots, citizen who, citizens who cast their vote in person will lose their right, their inherent right, to a free and fair election. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Scotty McClure.
Illy, why was this Election Integrity Committee? Why are the Democrats a majority? I thought we were. Only 800 bills? God, if you were in California, they'd have 8,000. Enough of that crap. Yeah, this, this thing here, members of the Mojave County Vote Supervisors will attend either in person or by telephone conference call. Is Buster going to take another year off sitting at home? I want this law changed. How's he going to do any committees or consultations? Is he going to do it in his pajamas on Zoom? Now, here's one. Karen ran off for me. This is Republican House Speaker Rusty Bowers. He won't let Athena Solomon, because she's nine months pregnant, she might have the baby today, or maybe she had it yesterday. She's not allowed to take time off. This is our Congress down in Phoenix, but Buster gets to work at home? He did this for a whole year before he became God. Sat up there in a cage. And, nah, this is not going to happen. I'll write to every newspaper, I don't know why they keep electing him down there. I don't live down there. But she's nine months pregnant, why should she subject her kid catching COVID, whether you believe in it or not? Why should she, and her husband is a state senator, Juan Mendez, we're expecting the birth of their first child this week as the legislative begins, but Rusty Bowers won't allow her to come in and vote, you know, and go home. See, that's the difference between her and him. I don't think Buster's pregnant. In-person participation, she will miss out on committee hearings and her house votes. I don't think he should be able to serve on anything. Now, was he in committee with you guys this morning on phone, which can be, you know, people can tap into that? So, you know, it's not exactly a executive session when people can listen to him on the phone. And this crap with this audit, for the 10th time, I'm asking for an audit. Those benches that they're going to get, you locked the gate on them. They just made those with my parking fees, $3 a time. That's my benches, not theirs.
Thank you, sir. Jennifer Esposito.
I don't know if this Board is aware, but at the last meeting, after the presentation by the hospitals, when we took a brief recess and they left, they had packed this room full of healthcare workers claiming that they were short-staffed. Those healthcare workers were wearing badges, and outside of this building admitted they were all on the clock, which begs the question for intelligent people, are they really short-staffed? Or are they willing to put patients at risk by bringing so many people on staff on? Or are they willing to put patients at risk by bringing so many people on staff on the clock down here to beg for the worst resolution I have ever heard read into the record? How do you vote, three of you, to approve a resolution which essentially says it will be amended later to something nobody's seen yet? And shout out to Supervisor Angus and Chairman Gould for voting no on the worst resolution ever read into the record that I'm aware of. Now, we've had some fun things happen on the COVID front recently, and I'd like to say I'm feeling pretty good about once again being vindicated. You know, when the truth finally is forced to be admitted on CNN, you can't hide it anymore. So Dr. Leanna Nguyen, their lead pundit, said, "Don't wear a cloth mask. Cloth masks are little more than facial decorations. There's no place for them in light of Omicron." Well, the funny thing is, is that talking head on Fox News pinned down Walensky at the CDC, and, you know, she said, "Well, N95 is the very least. It might provide some protection." But when you go back and you look at previous comments, she had said, quote, "They're very hard to breathe in when you wear them properly," Walensky said. "They're very hard to tolerate when you wear them for long periods of time." So that the idea that we should wear two masks or N95 masks or some sort of mask is just absurd, and apparently there's people in this room who didn't get the memo. But this is what I said months ago. This is what a lot of smart people said months ago. Yet, the former chairman was willing to shut down businesses in this county, and pretty much everyone was good with that, okay? The Health Department opened up how many cases into businesses over junk science? Pathetic. Now, our official government talking heads are saying that 98% of the COVID cases in the United States are the basically non-lethal upper respiratory Omicron or Maronacron or whatever you want to call it these days. And I'm not sure how they come to that, considering that we all know that PCR does not test for the Fauci-Franken virus and can't confirm anything, especially what County Manager Elders said just a few minutes ago. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jeff Esposito.
Good morning. All right, well, Dr. Scott Atlas was on the COVID team at the tail end of the Trump administration. We would have been better off with him instead of Fosse, the modern-day Mengele. He, Dr. Scott Atlas, wrote an article, entitled "The Reality Is the Lockdown's Killed People." Lockdowns pushed 130 million people into abject poverty, 400,000 new deaths from tuberculosis, tens of millions more babies dying of malaria, 325,000 Americans skipped chemo in the spring of 2020. I know one personally. 50% of heart attacks, strokes, did not call ambulance, 65% to 75% of cancer screening is missed, 85% of living organ transplants not done, 300% increase in teenage self-harm, 200% to 300% increase in teenage anxiety and depression, 52% of college-age kids gained unwanted 28 pounds in 2020. Another interesting fact is during this plandemic, the 10 richest men's wealth more than doubled from $500 billion to $1 trillion during the plandemic. This is by design and a method to wipe out the middle class. Our illustrious health director needs to divorce herself from the CDC, the WHO, and Fauci. And Supervisor BJ should show up to these meetings in person or step down. And from what you said, Mr. Manager, this morning, holy mackerel, I think you are a retard. Let's go, Brandon.
Thank you, sir. Consent agenda. The following items listed under the consent agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion on said items unless a board member so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for a separate discussion and action. Supervisor Bishop, have anything you'd like to remove?
28, please.
28. Supervisor Angus.
12, please.
12. Supervisor Langenfelter.
Nothing this morning, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson.
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, less items 12 and 28.
So moved.
Second.
You've heard that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so order. Item 12, Supervisor Angus.
Okay, the item is to approve the receipt of the public health portion of Prop 207 funds in the amount of $102,479 in budget and backup materials, and request finance to set up a new fund. I just, oh, there you are. This is Prop 207 is the marijuana, the legalization of marijuana, recreational sale. And I was just, you know, because when I first read it, you know, during our budget, we had this discussion about, now, whether you agree with it or not, this was the discussion, whether to put it, install a small sales tax and lower property tax to decrease the burden on the backs of the people who've been paying it the most. And we had a very healthy discussion about that. We didn't do it this year. But I, so where did this money come from, the $102,479? It wasn't a sales tax. Was that state shared? Where'd that come from?
Director Burley.
Chairman Gould, members of the board, Supervisor Angus, these are part of the tax funds for the marijuana. And public health was granted as part of that proposition, a portion of those funds, and this is the public health portion. So I believe the Sheriff's Department has some funds also on the agenda that they'll be addressing.
Sam, has the administration ever, or will they in the future, ever do some kind of survey, I don't know the word, to figure out how much we would have received if we just had a quarter cent sales tax? And again, not a discussion whether we should do it, I just, I think information is a good thing to have, right? So what do you plan on doing with this money?
Supervisor Angus, we are looking to use those funds to address some mental health issues in our county. We were pursuing prior to the pandemic some mental health first aid training for adults and for youth, and that basically took a hiatus once we had to focus all of our attention on COVID. So we'd like to circle back to that and gain some momentum again. We don't have exact plans at this point, but these funds will be dedicated towards those kinds of actions and activities.
Okay, I like that, if that is what I know, that there's now, you know, we're having the reach-out program, there's going to be a new spotlight on mental health, so I hope that these funds will be used for that. Thank you. And with that, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so order. Supervisor Bishop, number 28.
Thank you. I see Stu Lukowski come into the podium, so I'll give him a minute. Good morning, Mr. Lukowski. I was just curious, being on the Board of the Arizona Commerce Authority, when we applied for this grant, had Apache Road already began the construction process, and is that why we were turned down because we had already committed to county funds to do this road?
Director Lutowski.
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Bishop, members of the board, yes, that's correct. When the board directed the staff to pursue the Apache Road construction in November 2019, we in fact proceeded, and the board awarded the contract in March of 2021. At that same time, on or about, we became aware of the Arizona Commerce Authority grant. So simultaneous to already acting on the board's award of the contract, we made application for it. Well, we came to find that the application and funds availability were dependent upon the applicable project not starting until an IGA was in place. And gosh, we completed the project prior to the IGA even being approved in November of 2021. That deemed the project ineligible. So in summary, we had a contract awarded, which we as staff, as well as working under the parameters of the contract, had no flexibility to just outright delay the contractor from starting the project. And as a result, we just pursued the grant, but then came to learn that the grant funds were ineligible. So we just wanted to, in the spirit of making the board aware of everything that transpired with this project, wanted to agendize this item, just to make the board aware that we could not obtain the funds of $250,000 that were previously anticipated.
Okay, and then in going forward, I assume there will be other grant opportunities for Phase 2?
Yes, this does run in a cycle, that we could apply in the future for other grants, similar grants.
Okay. That clears it up for me. Thank you very much.
Further questions for Director Lutowski? Hearing none. It's a pleasure of the board.
Chairman Gould, if this needs a motion, I'll certainly make that motion to approve.
Second.
You've heard that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so order. Public hearings. I open the public hearing on item 36. Is there anyone here to testify on item 36? Hearing none, I close the public hearing. Pleasure of the board.
Chairman Gould, I make a motion that we deny the Resolution Number 2022-010.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so order. Open the public hearing on item 37. Is there anyone here to testify on item 37? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Pleasure of the board.
Chairman Gould, I make a motion that we deny Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2022-011.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so order. Going to open the public hearing on item 38. Anyone here to testify on item 38? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Gould, I make a motion that we deny Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2022-012.
You've heard, oop.
I'll second.
You've heard that motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so order. Open the public hearing on item 39. Anyone here to testify on item 39? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Bishop.
I'll make a motion that we approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2022-013. It's a rescission of the BOSS Resolution 2006-649, and repeal the Martyn Ranch area plan.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so order. Going to open the public hearing on item 40. Anyone here to testify on item 40? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Bishop.
I will make a motion that we approve BOSS Resolution Number 2022-014, a rescission of the BOSS Resolution 2006-648, and revert the Mojave County general plan land use designations and properties located as described.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so order. Item 41.
Chairman Gould, members of board supervisors, as discussed in executive session, the item, item 41, is in regards to prospective litigation or prospective options in litigation in Mojave County Superior Court, Cause Number CV 2020-00083 and CV 2020-00824, sorry, 825. The options were discussed in executive session. Mojave County Attorney's Office awaits the board's instruction.
Thank you, sir. Pleasure of the board.
Chairman Gould, I make a motion that we approve going with the county attorney's recommendations and allow him, what was, what did we say we were going to do? To approve the county attorney's recommendations.
I'll second that.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so order. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let's see. Chairman, board members, I'm here to describe the event that's up in front of you right now.
Can I get you to state your name?
Ken Capatelli.
Thank you, sir. And you're the applicant?
Excuse me?
You are the applicant for the event.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
So I guess you guys, January 3rd, had a meeting, and it was continued because you had questions. I'm here to answer some of the questions of the event that's proposed to you guys. This event was actually created by Bullhead City. I'm doing a all-ages event. The weekend before, Mayhem is doing their 21-and-over event, so we're coordinating more with the mayor, high school, all that kind of stuff. I'm here to answer any of your questions. I guess one of the questions was someone, I got right here on my notes, that they thought that possibly that we were stepping on the toes of the other event, which Bullhead City is actually going to market instead of Laughlin River Run or Bullhead River Run, they're doing Bullhead Week, Bike Week, and we're going to be the first weekend. Mayhem will be the second weekend. So first weekend will be like for the community, all ages. Second weekend is more 21-and-over, back to like the Laughlin River Run kind of way. So that's where we're at right now.
Sure. Questions for the applicant?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Angus.
I'm the one who wanted to continue this. I'm glad you came this time. Thank you. And it's my district, and we look forward every year to, you know, the River Run, and then that's kind of went away in Laughlin. Well, it's smaller, it'll probably come back at some point. And then Bullhead City kind of picked up the mantle and has been doing this every year. It's been growing. And then you came, then I see you put up, took out a permit to do basically the same event the week before. And so it does look, it does look like you're stepping on toes. It does. Now, you just said that you are working with the city. You said you're working with the mayor.
City manager, Toby Cotter, and then Jackie Jensen, who's like the marketing and event manager for the Bullhead City, they actually solicited me and asked me to create an all-ages event. They suggested-
At Davis Camp?
Yes. They asked me to do that, or I could use their city park. Jackie suggested, because it's right by the bridge, all the bikers go to the casino, they'll, we'll bring them across the bridge to Bullhead City, and then we're actually coordinating a ride on Saturday morning, and possibly the mayor will be involved for a Veterans Memorial Ride that early morning, and-
You're telling me that the city solicited you?
They asked me to create the event.
Okay, that was news to me, but okay.
Yeah, I already met with city manager Toby, Jackie. They already gave me contact names to contact Sam Macy from ADOT. Mayhem, Mayhem on Main Street, I think that's the promoter. They, I think they did it last year, a smaller venue for 21-and-over. They're continuing doing 21-and-over, and they're also doing their tattoo convention. So they asked me- asked me, because they're actually going to be the title sponsor for the Colorado River, because they said they can't have, they can't really back up a 21 and over kind of wild event. They can back it, but they can't back it fully with taxpayers' money because they need an all ages event.
It's an all ages event, just so we know that.
Correct. Yes.
Okay, and so I just want everyone to know, there are two events, because it's going to be confusing. And it's going to be like a whole week of motorcycles and stuff.
Yeah, two weekends. So one will be more geared towards the, and that's how we're going to market. The first weekend is an all ages event, and I will assist Mayhem marketing their 21 and over event.
No, no. Mayhem is all ages. It's all ages. I don't want this to go on the record.
I don't represent Mayhem, though. That's a different promoter.
I just, it was just odd to me that, you know, the city's been working very hard, the promoter's been working hard, and then we have a new event. It would almost be like, you know, you guys do your balloon festival and have a sue, and then the week before, I came in with my group and we did another balloon festival. It just, it just doesn't kind of sit well. But if you say that the city came to you, and I will double check that.
Does.
Then, you know, what can I say?
The city manager and Jackie Jensen, so...
So they contacted you.
Toby Cot, yes, they contacted me. Jackie Jensen contacted me. She actually contacted me about two years, right after COVID started, and I turned it down because of COVID and everything. And then she says, can you create an event? And she asked me again, and I said, okay, I'll do it this year.
Well, I definitely double checked.
And I have history with the Laughlin River, and I ran Delcon Promotions to the year of the shooting. So I did all that event coordinating for them. So I have the background in motorcycle industry. I also work with Sturgis and Daytona Bike Week.
Is there a reason you didn't sort of work with the promoter, and maybe you guys together could have done it together instead of promoting two different events? That is kind of confusing.
Well, when they asked me to create the event, it was, I thought it was going to be the same event, or the same weekend, but Mayhem picked the wrong weekend. The traditional weekend for Laughlin River Run is always the same weekend is the full weekend of April. So it doesn't go into May. It also goes during the same weekend as Desert Storm. So when I presented it and created the event, I presented it to the city after they asked me to create the event, and I go, here's the weekend.
All right.
And they agreed that was the correct weekend.
I'm all for free market. I don't like the way this went down. But, you know, if you're telling me that the city asked you, then I guess we'll have to talk to the city, but...
I can forward all that information to you and all that.
Please do. I would appreciate that.
Okay. Do you want me to send you an email?
Yes, please.
Okay. And I can get that off the website.
Yes.
I will.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Further questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Questions for Director Lutowski? I've got a question. So in an event such as this, do our, who collects the entry fee? Do we collect that at our gate? Or do the, does the vendor put people in our gate to collect it, or do they get passes? How does that work?
Chairman Gould, it's best my understanding on an event this size that the attendees would have entry to the park to attend the event, so that there is no entry fee collection. However, all the lodging, recreational vehicle, vacation home and everything, that will still fall on parks to rent out and of course retain all the revenues collected.
No, it was more, so do we collect the gate fee for the, do we collect the promoter's entry fee, or do they do that themselves?
Any fees charged by the promoter will be collected by the promoter.
Okay. And then they get some kind of a pass to get through the gate?
Correct, in that regard.
Okay. Do we get paid upfront, or do we take a...
We invoice upfront for the rental of the group areas.
Okay. Any questions for Director Lutowski? Supervisor Angus.
So I just received kind of a flurry of texts telling me that that is not their understanding what Mr., I'm not saying it's not true. I'm just saying this is what I've been hearing. So I'm sort of at the same position I was two weeks ago. I would really like to clear this, since Mr., since this new information is so not what I've been hearing, or else I wouldn't have even, you know, brought it back. I would have just voted yes if the city had told me that they were working with him. So again, I'm not saying that you are deceiving in any way. I just want to, again, make sure that everything is how it has been presented. Would it be possible to continue this again for another two weeks? Would this really, if another two weeks, would that really hinder you? Okay. So I'm going to make a motion. Is there any?
You looking for a second? I'll second.
Okay, so I make a motion that we continue this to our next board meeting.
I'll second.
You've heard that motion in second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. Do have it. So ordered. Item 43. Mr. Lutowski. You didn't go far. Good.
Chairman Gould, members of the board, on October 18th, 2021, when the, when staff presented the fairgrounds transition plan, there was a second motion that the board did not contemplate at that time, and that was to appropriate $100,000 in direct staff to procure professional consulting services to evaluate current alternate sites and forging long-term Mojave County Fairgrounds operations and growth. So essentially, it would be a market analysis and a potential site selection, alternative site to the existing fairgrounds location.
Questions for Mr. Lutowski?
Chairman Gould, I have a question.
Supervisor Bishop.
My question is, why are we going forward with talking about moving the fairgrounds when we haven't really gotten off the ground with managing the fairgrounds? I mean, we just took over at the first of the year. We have employees that are, are running the fairgrounds now that really haven't figured out what their job is yet, or how to proceed, or whether or not Mojave County is going to be successful in this transition. Certainly we will be, but you know, it's, it's not a proven yet. So I think this is really premature. I'd like to see, personally, I'd like to see Mojave County run the fairgrounds for a year, maybe two years, before we start making decisions on moving the fairgrounds. So that's, that's just my, my personal opinion. I think we need to learn our job before we try to complicate it and build new buildings. And there's a lot of groups that use the fairgrounds now that'll be inconvenienced by this transition if we move the fairgrounds to a new area before we're ready to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Langenfelter.
Thank you, Chairman Gould. You know, I'm in favor of actually just the county's staff, you and perhaps others that County Manager Elters would task to this, to take this year to really look at a number of criteria for a new facility. I think that it is a good idea to, and we're certainly in no rush, but I think it's a good idea to look at a facility that would be able to serve everything that Mojave County or wants to do, or that we could do for the next, you know, 60, 70 years, right? I think a lot of the problems that we've seen with the growth of the city of Kingman around the current facility, it's actually kind of small. Back in the day, when they allowed motorsports events to happen at the facility, you had the equestrian and the livestock events, we're tripping over the motorsports, and the motorsports tripping over the equestrian and the livestock. Those are not complementary uses. So I think that there's no harm with taking this year from the staff. I certainly wouldn't vote to allocate $100,000 to look at something. I think that the county staff is fully capable of doing it. And perhaps there's a site out there that we could identify that would be good for, you know, the rodeos, the 4H, the motorsports, which we're not doing any motorsports events. That's a, that's a money-making sector, and who knows what else. But I guess I'd hope that the board would vote to just allow County Manager Elters and his staff to take 2022 to do an evaluation and maybe bring something back, if they find anything, as a part of a five or a six-year plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Supervisor Langenfelter that it's something we need to plan in advance. I would think that from what he's talking about, it might be something that would be good to bring back at budget time, so we have a plan on how money was going to be set aside, or what it's going to cost us, you know, so the public knows exactly what it's going to cost and how we're going to get the money. And a location, I believe, should be picked relatively soon, just for the price of land that's going on. That's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. I'm interested in exploring relocation of the fairgrounds. I'm not interested in hiring a $100,000 consultant to do it. I think staff can provide us the information that we need. The board supervisors will be, then have to, you know, double check that to make sure that we're all on the same page. I realize it's a political decision, and staff doesn't want to be making political decisions, but that, those are the decisions that you have politicians to make. But I think that staff can run that down. And there's, there's no giant rush to do it, but it does determine how much money are we willing to spend on the existing fairgrounds as far as improvements and upkeep and whatnot, because we don't want to be putting good money after bad and then going to go ahead and move the whole place to a new location. That's, that's my logic. Thank you. Any further comments? Pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Langenfelter.
Several of us signed.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, sorry. Noreen Welton. Pardon me.
Fire.
That's when I do the, if I start to vote, feel free to chime in. That's why I do it slow.
Okay, I, yeah, I just want to discuss, and I'm happy to see that the board already understands how valuable the fairgrounds are to the county and to the city of Kingman. I'm not a public speaker, so you'll have to forgive me.
Sure.
But, and you know that to the community, it's extremely important to have the county fair there, rodeos, home shows, gun shows, horse races, and many other events. But today, I'm here to talk about the event that the Kingman Cancer Care Unit has there every year, and has had there for 46 years. And that's our annual craft fair that we have, which is our major fundraiser for our group. And our group is a local group. We help local patients with cancer with bills and things that cannot be covered with insurance and that sort of thing, including rent and utilities and that sort of thing. So this year, we've helped over 80 patients and spent over $70,000. The year 2020, we didn't, weren't able to raise a lot of money because the fairgrounds were closed, of course, and we didn't have our fair. But this year, we did have a fair, and we had 112 vendors. It's a very large fair, and we have it, and it's a lot of local people and craftsmen, but we also have a lot of out, into the larger community, including the state, and some out-of-state vendors come. So it would be very difficult for us to find an area bigger. We use the whole building, the building, the wings, we use the whole thing for our fair. We even have outside vendors. So it would be really difficult for us to find another place that would be large enough to hold us. And we would hate to have to, you know, go too far afield to hold our fair. So, but that's just a general statement of, you know, our, our position, what we do, and how we use the fairgrounds. But I've been asked today to tell you that our group is opposed to you spending $100,000 on a consultant. And we think that that money would be better spent improving some of the fairgrounds activities now. But, you know, that's our position. So I appreciate you listening to me, and if you have any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Langenfelter.
I just want to take a moment to say thank you for coming this morning, and thank you to you and your group for the tremendous work that you do in Kingman. It's a wonderful event. I've been there myself, and it helps a lot of different people. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think a lot of people are familiar with us and how we've been doing it for years. So appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman Gould, I'd like to...
Supervisor Bishop.
I would also like to thank the speaker. I am a Mojave County Downwinder, a survivor, and a member of your group. So I appreciate you coming today and speaking to us.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were going to speak. So, yeah, thank you. Yes, we feel like we do a lot of good. A lot of our members are survivors, and our patients are, you know, very thankful for us. And it is a private thing, too. When we have patients, we have one, we have a two-person committee that just selects those patients, and we don't know who they are. As a whole, we don't know who they are, but appreciate you saying that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions for the speaker? Hearing none. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Scotty McClure.
There's no way they're going to find another place. They're not going to go out to Yucca to hold this fair. Why don't you guys bring back the gun show, the circus, et cetera, if you're going to $400 or $500 a building? Or maybe take this $100,000 and give it to the district attorney, and have them go after the audit. That's my 11th time. I just can't imagine you guys moving this building. It's got big steel in there, and it can be used for the next 100 years. Go in there and look. Yeah, it needs a paint job. It needs some wall decorations, or fix the holes in the, whatever. It's a heck of a lot cheaper than doing a brand-new build. You already own it. I don't think you're making payments on it. And the most important thing, the most expensive thing you have out there, is the plumbing. It works. Think about that. I've never seen a bathroom, commode, toilet, whatever. I've never seen one backed up. The plumbing works. And you know how much a plumber costs. So let's fix something again that don't need fixing. The government's real good about that, just tearing it down and throwing it away. It's in a neighborhood. Kids can ride their bicycles to it. So mom and dad can trust their kids to, you know, stay on the sidewalk. I guess it's legal to drive on sidewalks. There it is in Bullhead, whatever. You move it out, you can, what are you going to do about ambulance? You're going to have to have an ambulance in each and every little gig you have out there in Yucca? Or the Kingman Crossing? You do. They haven't got to sit out there how many hours a day while Depai's having his auction? And he spends more money there than anybody. I might need an ambulance from Yucca. Sorry, Ron. I've been there. There's nothing out there. You can't go to McDonald's to get a burger or anything, and nobody, it's too expensive to rent that little kitchen you guys got. If you want to spend the 100 grand, like I say, get my furniture back. And whatever, don't let them have a damn thing until they can prove where the books are. And this, moving this out to the Kingman Crossing with KX Ventures, you need to start answering the questions put forth to you, your connection to them. You need to answer the newspaper's questions, or else you shouldn't be allowed to vote on this. Pick on Buster, I might as well pick on him.
It's interesting that you brought up circuses, because I believe we're prohibited from having a circus because we're inside Kingman City limits. Those are Kingman City rules, not our rules. Those are Kingman City rules, not our rules. Gordon Sanchez.
Hi, I'm Gordon Sanchez. I'm coming on behalf of myself and the Kingsmen Route 66. Good morning, Chairman Gould. Ron, how are you? The rest of you, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your service and your willingness to govern this county. It can't be easy, I wouldn't want to do it. About this proposal, to spend $100,000 to pay outside consultants to decide what to do with the fairgrounds, my first question would be who proposed this and why? Let me give you a little bit of history. The county had leased the fairgrounds to an organization called the Mojave County Fair Association, and also paid its subsidies to help it to run, manage, maintain the fairgrounds, with stipulations that it holds certain events annually, one of them the county fair, another a rodeo, another the cancer fair, and I think a fourth one may, may be the Home and Garden Show, and also to hold other events. And charged it with the, to make good use of the property for the benefit of the community. Now, there are certain stakeholders in this, in the fairgrounds, and those stakeholders are the community and those people that bring these events to the community, one of which is the Cancer Care Unit. The Kingman Cancer Care Unit, they're represented here today. I love these people because of the work they've been doing since the 1970s. They're an all-volunteer organization, nobody gets paid, and they do things to benefit those in our community who are afflicted with cancer. The cancer fair that they held, hold annually at the fairgrounds is their biggest fundraiser. Another stakeholder is the Kingsmen Route 66, also an all-volunteer organization. Since 1985, we've been producing PRCA sanctioned rodeos at the fairgrounds for the last 37 years, and for the last couple of years, a GCPRA sanctioned rodeo as well. The rodeo is our main event, the main event that we produce. We also produce other events like Jim Canas at the fairgrounds, and it is, the rodeo is perhaps the largest annual event here. My time over?
Continue.
Okay.
Give you another minute.
Okay. The, the other stakeholders are the local businesses, the ones that are part of the Home and Garden Show. They are stakeholders. They come to the fairgrounds and they, they show their goods and services, strut their stuff. Another stakeholder, of course, are the residents of this county. So these being the stakeholders, why not consult them? Why not talk to them? Why throw money away, taxpayers' money, at some outside consulting firm who knows little or nothing about us to decide what we should do with our fairgrounds? I, I've got to ask what the motive is to, to hire an outside consultant. Why not consult with these historical stakeholders and rely on your very capable county professionals in parks and recs and other departments? These are people that you hired and they, as far as I can see so far, they're doing a pretty good job. Why not consult with them? Why not let them figure it out so that we can come to a future plan for the fairgrounds ourselves? Thank you.
Thank you sir. Questions for the Speaker?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Langenfelter.
Thank you Chairman Gould. Thank you for coming today, for your testimony, I appreciate it. I think you raise a good point. I certainly think that as the county staff go about looking at this, that they should contact those organizations that have been using our fairgrounds for quite some time, including the Kingsmen. My question specific to you is if you had a larger facility, would the Kingsmen be able to not only conduct the rodeo and the events that you do now, but would you be able to expand your offerings to the county? Additional rodeos and other things?
Well, we can, we can do our best. We can do it with the facility we have now. We've, you know, we have grown from having an annual, one annual rodeo to having two. That was a big step for us because our membership is relatively low. Everyone who is a member pays dues into the organization, nobody gets paid for their services or their expertise or their time. I put hundreds of hours in every year for the last 20 years, and it's for the love of rodeo and for the love of this community and the Western heritage that we enjoy here. We have expanded it to bring in the Jim Canas, which are rather not, you know, expert type of events, but things for small children from three years old and up, and even for older adults, so that they can come out and compete in an amateur event, and they have a great time doing it. We'd like to have other types of events, like ropings and perhaps barrel race events, things like that, and I think we can still do it here at these grounds. All we need is, is an arena, just like the one that we have here. If it's in another place that has similar amenities, that's great, but, you know, for the time being, this one works just fine for us.
I've had a number of conversations with Brian Di Maria, who lives in my district, and he's got some great ideas, so I just want to say thanks again to all of you that, that put on those events for our citizens.
All right, you're welcome, and thank you for, you know, keeping the communication open with Brian and our organization.
Further questions for the Speaker? Hearing none. Thank you sir.
Thank you.
Did you have something more ma'am, or you're waving to Mr. Sanchez? Thank you. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Langenfelter.
I'd like to make a motion that we task County Manager Elters and his staff to evaluate a number of criteria, looking at possible larger site, and as a part of that, I'd request that you and your staff consult with all of the current users on their, on their plans as well.
You've heard that motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. Do have it. It's ordered.
Did you spend the money?
No.
Item 44. Mr. Smith.
Chairman Gould, members of the Board, thank you for this opportunity. Just wanted to give you an update or present this to you. So this is the third cycle for CDBG. With that being said, we actually split this with Colorado City, so that total, that's, that's due to Mojave County or for our proportion, is a little over 400,000. There's three projects for this. The Hatch Valley Domestic Water, it's 65,000. The Chloride Domestic Water Improvement, 70,000. And then the Mojave County Community Services Department for Owner Occupied Housing Rehabilitation. There's also another part to this as well, which would be the Competitive State Award for Owner Occupied that we'll be applying for if approved. To give you the background information as well as how this came about. So we held a meeting in November. 24 people came and participated. Of those 24, eight asked for additional support in regards to meeting the deadlines and the obligations that were needed to qualify for the CDBG. Of that, only three then met the guidelines to actually proceed forward with this opportunity. I'll take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Smith. Supervisor Angus.
Hi. Yeah, you know, we go through this, what is every other year, every two years?
Correct.
And in the past, I just want to make sure that the whole process is still happening the way it's happened in the past, and a letter is sent to all the parties, nonprofits, the agencies who have in the past put in for it. That letter went out to everybody.
That is correct.
And, and we divided by district, and, you know, honestly, in years gone by, it was a coveted thing, you know, whether this is a good or bad thing. I think with the money we got from ARPA, some of those needs that would have gone for, you know, at least in my district, went, you know, we got the money, so, you know, money, money, money. But that is a very large amount for the housing, and I know there's always been a little bit of debate about that, too, because we're picking winners and losers, and I know there's an arduous process that maybe some other time we can, we can talk about.
Sure. Just for clarification, we follow all the same procedures that were in place for the past years, and we have changed nothing at this time. I think one of the things, looking back and working with the grant coordinator, Jamie Bernier, one of the things that I actually express is that I feel that moving forward, we could do a better job of publicity for this opportunity. To your point, we did take an ad in the local paper, that's kind of dated, so, I mean, there are different things that we're looking at, and we are going to make improvements as we move forward for the next cycle.
One of the things we can do is we can go maybe to, I know in Bullhead City, in front of the city councils, because they've got their own money and they do their own promotion, and I think we kind of get lost in that, you know, Bullhead City is, is my district, and I do always like to help out my district, so somehow, at least for me, it kind of fell between the cracks this time, but we'll have another shot in a couple of years, right?
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions for Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop.
Mr. Smith, what are the three that are going forward?
Sure. So there's one from District 1 and District 4, and these were the projects that I had, I listed off earlier, which was the Hatch Valley Domestic Water Improvement, the Chloride Domestic Water Improvement, and both, for both of those projects, it was really to back up generators, the continued services in case of power outages, and then the Mojave County Community Service Department Owner Occupied Housing Rehabilitation Program. Those are the three.
Okay, and then with the Chloride Improvement District, you've, you've cleared up the, the multiple requests for money from ARPA as well, so that we don't duplicate? Is that correct?
We'll have to do that, yes Supervisor Bishop.
Mr. Chairman.
County Manager.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, and Supervisor Bishop, we will indeed keep an eye, the intent is to wait first to see if the Board approves this, and if indeed this is the case, we'll make sure there is no duplication between what you received in a way of request for ARPA funds and what this project is.
Okay, thank you very much.
So Mr. Smith, if this, the Board approves this, will, I think what's the, if we divide this amount by, by the five different districts, it's what, $70,000?
Yes, that's correct.
So those two projects are less than 70. What happens to the balance of the spending in that district?
So, so the remaining balance then would go to the third project, which is the Mojave County Community Service Department, and then we would do the rehabilitation for loan income.
So would that mean then the, the balance of, say, the District 4 money is spent then in District 4?
In regards to the housing, to be completely honest Chairman Gould, we would just take the people as they qualify for that project. That's my understanding of the way that would work, but I definitely could look into that.
I thought in the past that it went out by district.
You know, for the, Jamie, would you mind coming to the podium? In regards to the exact cycle and the way that breaks down, I'm just not for sure. Chairman Gould.
Morning Chairman, Supervisors. For this actual CDBG cycle, you would designate per district the money allocated. It's different than the other grants that we do, because those are countywide, but to answer your question, yes, it is my understanding, you can specifically designate of that 70,000 and some change, how much can go towards your district, or you can all come together and agree to let it be a countywide thing that the Owner Occupied Housing Rehab Program can designate per income qualifications.
So that, if we were to do that, then the balance of the money, if you split that money five ways, then the, the balance of the money in the two districts that had special projects would then go to housing rehabilitation in their district?
If you designate it that way, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Angus.
I'm, now I'm a little confused, and that was a great point I hadn't thought about. So with the money that's going to the housing, that, is that going to be divided up by district? Or is it, like you said, it's first come, first served, so is there any way it can be divided up by district? I'm, you know, I'm sure that maybe, you know, in my case, the city can help that along, they've got a list of people. Can that be done?
So I'm not for sure the federal regulations on that. I'll ask Jamie, do you know of anything?
I don't, but I can look it up and find out.
We could look that up and get back.
It seems to me it's the same thing as dividing the monies up, so basically, if we had said, it's okay, each district gets $70,000, and then I said, okay, I want all this money to go to the low-cost housing, low-income housing, it would be the same thing. So I don't, I don't see where there would be a problem, but if you can, you know, look at that, that would be great.
Sure.
Further questions for the team?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Bishop.
If we're finished with discussion, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
Like to make a motion that we approve as written Items 1, 2, and 3 on the agenda.
Discussion.
Wait, you got to get a second. Second. Discussion.
So if we approve this today, from what we just talked about, we can still explore that and make that happen, or if we approve this the way it is, then we can't go back and divide up that housing money by district.
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Angus, I believe we could do that as it's approved here, and if it needed to be changed, we would bring that back to the Board and get further direction at that time.
Perfect, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it. Do have it. It's ordered. That concludes our agenda.
Motion to, 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 what's the word? Oh my God. Motion to, what's the word? When you end the meeting?
Adjourn.
Oh my God, I didn't take my pre-adj.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We adjourn.